This is the Corporately Municipalities of Central Elgin for our regularly planned meeting. Today is Monday, February the 12th. I would ask those in the gallery to join with council and stand for the national anthem, please.
That's why I love the Google Pixel Watch. It does a lot of things too, like connect to my pixel and pixel buds.
The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Wahandada and by Anishapi nations, including ancestors of the Chipewas, of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hattasani, Atawandurunk, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. I welcome everyone who's joining us online, as well as we have a full gallery this evening. Always appreciate when people come out and make their statement in the democratic process. Our first order of business tonight is the disclosure of particular interests in the general nature thereof. If any of the councillors have any. Seeing none, an adoption of the previous minutes. Mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor Noble, councillor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, for your information, there are currently no minutes requiring council approval at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. First delegation. Delegation this evening is from the Front Street Neighborhood Association. I believe we have, is it Kelly Shuen who's presenting? Kelly, if you'd come and take the podium here, please, and just press your button for the microphone, and then we can hear you, as well as the people that are joining us online.
Hello?
Welcome, Kelly.
Thanks, guys. Good evening, Mayor Sloan, Deputy Mayor Noble, councillors and staff. My name, as Mayor Sloan just said, is Kelly Shuen, and I would like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to our concerns this evening. I know your time is valuable, so I will come straight to the point. I am here on behalf of the Front Street Neighborhood Association, here in numbers behind me. Still coming in. Great show of support. For Front Street Stabilization and Road Reconstruction Project, along with the needed speed reduction measures, we are very grateful for the erosion controls being implemented to protect the beautiful and ecologically significant bluffs we are fortunate enough to live along. But respectfully, we are requesting you to reconsider at this time the necessity of installing another parking bay on Front Street. If I may draw your attention to page four of the report, where the second paragraph starts, "Staff and the consultant proposed the parking bay due to ongoing parking shortfalls throughout Port Stanley. We, as Front Street residents, agree that parking can be an issue during the summer in the village, a very contentious issue sometimes, but we are a dead-end street in a residential neighborhood, at the top of a very long hill. We don't get through traffic. So we don't feel that we have the same parking shortfalls on Front Street that are visible elsewhere in the village during tourist season. If I may now draw your attention to page... Four. Pardon me. In addition to the seven to 14 spots already available in the existing municipal lot at the southwest corner of Tower Heights and Inver Eery Lane, we also have street parking available along Tower Heights itself. Not to mention that all residents along Front Street have parking either in front of, beside, or behind their homes already. It is also pertinent to point out that the Tower Heights lot is so underutilized that two abandoned cars and a trailer sat there for over a year undisturbed. There's also a feral cat colony right in behind there, and the cats come out and sunbathe on the asphalt because no one ever uses it. They're nice cats, but hey. I digress. So, we ask ourselves, is it economically feasible to install another parking lot not 50 meters away from an already existing underutilized lot? I would also like to highlight where, regardless of previously stating on page four that the parking bay is being proposed due to ongoing shortfalls throughout Port Stanley, on page six of the report, it gets a bit contradictory. It goes on to say that due to the distance to downtown, 1.1 kilometers, and main beach, 1.3 kilometers, staff do not feel the parking would be utilized by any other than residents. As we just illustrated, the residents don't use the parking that they have now. And as a resident of Mariners Bluff, at the east end of Front Street, I can personally assure you that people can and regularly do take Front Street right through the condo core and down the back steps on the way to the village and the beach. People will walk a long way to save $20 in parking. So we believe it could be entirely possible the addition of another lot would add more than just the expense of installation and maintenance. It would need to be monitored and patrolled for non-resident activity, which can range from parking infractions and littering to trespassing and even public intoxication on the way back up to the bluffs from the beach and the village, which again, as myself, as a resident with a clear view of the back stairs to the village from my own home, I can personally attest to witnessing this on a regular basis. I've had things stolen from the back of my yard. I've had my propane tank walked away with. I've had people use my backyard as a washroom. Sorry, I'm digressing again. Before I close off and hand the podium off to my co-speaker, Chris Fibbs, let me please reiterate our request to have the addition of the parking bay reconsidered. Port Stanley is a beautiful quaint little village and one of the few remaining views on the North Shore between Port Bruce and Rondo, whose views have not yet been instructed by the wind turbines. So let's please work together with the long view of what this means for future tourism and resident enjoyment and agree that it would be a shame, in the words of Joni Mitchell, "to pave paradise and put up a parking lot." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Shuen. Ms. Fibbs, please. Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Chris Fibbs. I'm now going to sing that song, so. Here we go. Council, thank you again, as Kelly said, for your time and attention tonight. We appreciate it. Many of the concerns that you're hearing are, generally speaking, concerns that would have come out in a neighborhood consultation if a typical one had happened. The concerns that Kelly spoke to are concerns of many of the people here, and we are happy to share all of those and more with you. As you've heard, there is no support, there is no neighborhood support for the parking changes on Front Street. You've seen the petition, you've heard Kelly's deputation, you see the residents standing behind us. But I must say that there is support for protecting and preserving the unique characteristics of Front Street. We look to the environment section of yours and our official plan to get a bit of guidance from that document. In the environment section of that, there are four goals within the official plan with respect to our environment. To maintain, and I'm going to synopsize the four for you. To maintain, restore, and enhance the long-term ecological integrity of the natural heritage system. To protect, maintain, and enhance natural heritage corridors. To improve the sustainability and long-term health of Central Elgin's ecosystems. And to protect, maintain, and enhance natural heritage features. Each of these goals can be applied to the situation. Restore, enhance, improve, protect. That's what we are asking for. We are asking council to reopen and reconsider this item. We are asking you to support our official plan. We are asking you to protect, not pave, this publicly accessible green space. We are asking you to protect what is a significant heritage view of Lake Erie and Port Stanley. From what I understand, because I'm new here, but it used to be called Picnic Hill. And that is an incredible view, not just of the lake, but of the pier and the town. So we ask you, we ask for your indulgence, we ask for your consideration, we ask you to reopen, reconsider, and put people over parking. And we welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris and Kelly. Council, questions for the presenters?
Were we that clear?
Well, it was an excellent presentation. First of all, I appreciate you all coming and giving us your viewpoints. It's an important part of the democratic process, and other groups like yours have come and brought forward delegations, and I think that's important, and we appreciate them. We will take the presentation, the information, under consideration, review your comments with staff, and we will be in touch.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. We're moving right along, right? Councillor, next item under correspondence is a letter from Colleen Burns. I think Colleen's here tonight. I'm just going to give a minute to clear the chamber, but thank you, folks. Moving forward, we have a letter from Colleen Burns. I believe Colleen's in the gallery with a request for council to consideration with respect to banning public and private fireworks for the month of May in the interest of wildlife protection. Questions or comments from council? Councillor Graham.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Colleen, are you just requesting it for the month of May only?
If you'd turn the microphone on, please, Ms. Burns.
Yes, just for the month of May.
Just a quick follow-up. Is it for specific reasons for May? I know.
Oh. There we go. Okay. The month of May is the month that we're most concerned about because the wildlife are breeding. Almost 25 mammals, birds, shorebirds, hawks, eagles, they're all in a breeding situation. And the most concerning is baby fawns because they are usually two or three days old when the fireworks start because they are born in the middle of May till the end of June. But most of them are now incoming, second week, third week of May. And the mother, like in my letter, I said the mother leaves them alone for the first two weeks, and they're literally just put in the bushes by themselves, and that's when havoc starts with the fireworks. So they're the most vulnerable.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other questions? Councillor Halpin, please.
If there, of course, I'll defer if anyone has more questions, but if there aren't, I'd like to move that we go forward with the ban.
I was going to ask Ms. Greenfall for her comments before we go, if that's okay? Ms. Greenall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, if this is something you would like to consider, I may encourage you to pass a motion to direct staff to review the request and then to come back with the fireworks bylaw so that it's all encompassing and not just a one-off.
Thank you, Councillor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do understand that we can't actually make bylaw motions without notice, so it wasn't that I expected the bylaw itself to be written today, but if we could move forward and prepare it.
Well, I think what we're asking for, if I may, is to get back with staff to give us a recommendation. Is that fair, Ms. Greenall?
If council, thank you, Mr. Mayor of council, so would like your motion to staff to review the request and seek further information and return that report to council.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important, too, to find out if it's actually something that we could somehow enforce. I don't, like, I know we have parking bylaws and we have a lot of other bylaws that we enforce. I don't know what the process would be to actually enforce something like that. So that might be good for us to know as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Burns, please.
Understanding in the Central Elgin Noise Bylaw, there is supposedly a delegated noise control officer. Apparently that was listed, but that bylaw is over 20 years old. So apparently there is somebody that could be delegated to enforce that. I'd be happy to go around.
You're an animal rights advocate, and I know you're busy, but we couldn't ask you to take that on as well, Colleen.
I just also wanted to say, I didn't, I mean, being out there with that three-day-old baby that I had, it was like being in a war zone. I mean, I was in a situation with a field. I didn't know where the fireworks were coming from. It was quite startling for me, and I even knew what was going on. And I understand that fireworks are a deep-seated tradition, and I get that. And I know with it being the 200-year celebration that the plan for, I think you were saying, Mayor Sloan, about fireworks being, there's going to be a display in July or something. And then there's also New Year's as well. I'm not happy with that, but I'm not trying to be greedy either. And, you know, the most important for our wildlife is their breeding season, and that's during the month of May.
Perfect, and I understand and I appreciate your understanding that for things like Canada Day, that the Port 200 Committee has considered fireworks. Perhaps in 2025, it'll be a drone show, but for right now, for what we have for resources, and appreciate your willingness to compromise on something which you feel very passionate about, and I appreciate that, Colleen. Any other questions? So, Ms. Greenall, we will report back to staff, we will get a report back from staff. We'll continue to keep you in line in the process, and again, thank you for your presentation. I think I have one comment here.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I will need a motion from council for you to give us direction. Thank you.
Councillor Halpin, would you make a motion, please?
Thanks. Then yes, I will move that we request a report from staff on changes to our bylaw or bylaw around fireworks.
Do I have a seconder for the motion, anyone? Councillor Bachman.
I do have one other comment, I'm sorry.
Sir, go ahead, Colleen.
My concern also is getting the word out to the public, and I think, you know, the clock is ticking. That's why I tried to get my request in as soon as possible because baby raccoons are going to be coming the end of February, so it's starting already, even with this mild weather, it's been terrible. I also want to mention, because I usually kept the other councils in mind, when we were having an outbreak with distemper, which we are right now. We're, I'm already up to 20 raccoons that have had to be euthanized from distemper. Not all of them in Port Stanley, but most of them in Central Elgin.
Noted. Thank you for that, Colleen. I have a motion on the table, I believe. Do you want to read it back for me, or for us, rather, Ms. Leach, please?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman. The staff be directed to investigate and report on the request from Colleen Burns, authorized wildlife custodian, for council to consider a ban of public and private fireworks for the month of May in the interest of wildlife protection for consideration at a future meeting of council.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Ms. Greenall? Thank you very much. Thank you again, Colleen, for keeping us up to date on that, and we appreciate your coming out. I also noted in the gallery, we have former councillor Fiona Nguyen. Nice to see you as a former council and always friend of, continuous friend of Central Elgin. Thanks for being here. Next for information, I have the minutes from Heritage Central Elgin. Are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder received for information. Councillor Halpin? And councillor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Connors. That correspondence items number one to three be received for information and filed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Next report is from the Chief Administrative Officer, CAO 0324, Spring Dream Lottery. Ms. Greenall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would defer the conversation over to the deputy clerk.
Thank you. Ms. Leach?
Mayor Sloan, through to council, I feel that the report is pretty self-explanatory. The only additional comment I would make is just noting that the value of the lottery being requested exceeds the regular amount that the municipality would operate under for regular lottery license administration, and that's why this request is coming to council for its consideration. It's a obviously significantly large, significantly large amount being a house being raffled off.
Questions or comments from council? Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a concern about the value with that? Just when you said it's coming to council, I just wonder, just considering.
Thanks so much through you, Mayor Sloan, to Deputy Mayor Noble. There is no concern, and I understand that this is a request that has happened in previous years and gone to council for consideration. It's always been granted, and I'm not aware of any issues that have resulted from this.
Thank you. Any other questions? If I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble? And councillor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Bachman, that report CAO 324 be received for information, and the council has no objections to the request from Ascend Fundraising Solutions for a dream home lottery to be held at the Kokomo Beach Club, 409100, the Promenade, Port Stanley, in support of London's hospitals, and that correspondence be sent to Ascend Fundraising Solutions indicating the same.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Excuse me. The next item is the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, ICS 0524, flower baskets. Mr. Brooks, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Staff is requests council direction on supporting the BIA's proposed purchase of the flower baskets for Port Stanley in 2024. At the October meeting of council, the flower basket program was turned down for 2024. Therefore, the BIA is proposing to pick that up, at least for Port Stanley. That would include the purchase of approximately 190 flower baskets for the area. In order to support the installation and maintenance of those flower baskets, the cost to the municipality would be approximately $22,500.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Quick question, the $22,500, what's the breakdown on that cost, please? Is that materials or is that labor?
I don't have an exact breakdown. That's an estimate based on the price that was presented at council in October for the total program. The majority of those costs are labor costs, as well as equipment and fuel costs.
Thank you. I have councillor Halpin, then councillor Graham, then councillor Bachman. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. At the time that we first spoke about this, I did object to the idea that we would pay for the work but not the materials in that that would specifically advantage Port Stanley over Belmont and Sparta. And because they have more committees and service groups, if we were going to seek that support, they were certainly going to get more than anyone else would. And that's exactly what I see happening here. We haven't had any groups come forward in Belmont about this, and Sparta has no support groups of any kind that can fund this sort of thing. So if the BIA would like to have a conversation about funding all of the baskets, or if we as a council would like to have a conversation about covering the two smaller areas while the BIA covers port, that would be great, but it doesn't seem fair that other vital business areas are not being supported and beautified.
Thank you. Councillor Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. I'm just trying to understand the numbers here, Mr. Brooks. So originally, the baskets, which were Belmont, I believe, and Port Stanley, were 56,000 for Sparta was last year as well? Okay. So the three areas, 56,000 for baskets, maintenance, putting them up, putting them down. And now, just for the maintenance of Port Stanley alone, it's 22,000. So it seems like it's a large amount of money just for maintenance of watering them, when it was covering three areas before, and now it's only covering one area.
Thank you, councillor Graham. Mr. Brooks, please.
Through you, Mayor, to councillor Graham. Again, this is an estimate. We don't have exact numbers on maintenance, equipment costs, and labor costs. Based on the $56,000 that was presented in October, this is a best estimate of what it would cost to service Port Stanley only. Now, you know, when we take that 56,000 that was presented for the three areas, 190 of the 250 baskets are in Port Stanley, so the vast majority of the work is in Port Stanley.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Bachman, please.
When I got the information, I started crunching some numbers and breaking it down, and I got some feedback from Jeff on flower costs and stuff like that. Understanding that a lot of the summer staff are used, I know in Belmont anyway, for that purpose, and in the morning, they tractor filled with water, filled with fertilizer, going up and down the street in the hot days, sometimes twice a day, keeping the flowers refreshed, and that takes pretty much most of a morning. And this is Belmont, okay? That's going up Main Street and back down the other side, down Main Street. I would say two to three hours would be the process from filling up and bringing the tractor back. And I'm just estimating again. The flowers are 65 bucks a piece, and if we break down the cost of the 22,500 divided by the 192 baskets that Port Stanley had, comes out to about $117 additional to the basket. So the total cost of a basket with fertilizer, water, and everything comes out to about $185. A whole cost for the town of Belmont, then, using 55 plants, would cost us $10,000. But now we're asking taxpayers, and Belmont taxpayers, to make sure Port Stanley looks pretty, but we're just going to throw Belmont out the window. And honestly, that's what it looks like, okay? To, I can tell you, to Belmont residents, we're going to keep Port Stanley looking nice, but we can't afford $10,000 for the town of Belmont? And that's counting the flowers. So looking at the total numbers, if we had 250 baskets, like Jeff was saying... So looking at the total numbers, if we had two hundred and fifty bas- or baskets, like Jeff was saying, Belmont got fifty-five out of the two hundred or the two hundred and fifty. So the remaining twenty, I guess, went to Sparta, and then the others went to port. Well, to me, this is either an all or nothing, or the BIA has to pay us for the service. And the reason I'm even throwing that suggestion out there was that the Belmont Lions Club offered to add additional equipment to the Union Street Park that was just completed last year. We asked for a cost estimate, and it was gonna be twenty thousand dollars. Eight, seven, eight thousand, I believe, Jeff, was the cost of the swings that we were Belmont Lions Club was gonna pay, and thirteen thousand was gonna be for the installation and, and uh, materials for that. And we just said, no, we can't, we couldn't afford the twenty thousand ticket. But now Belmont residents being asked to pay to keep the waters, flowers watered in Port Stanley? I don't, I don't see that as a, this to me is an all or nothing issue.
Thank you. Question, Jeff. When you talk about summer students, approximately, how many do we have?
Staff's intention for 2024 is to hire six. Uh, typically, we hire eight. If we were to go forward with this, uh, we would go back to the eight. Now, six would start sometime, you know, early to mid-May. And then we bring on two additional students uh, the first week of June to help support the uh, watering of the baskets.
Thank you. So to councillor Bachman's point, there is few, will be fewer summer students as, because of the fewer uh, uh, baskets.
There would be if we were doing no baskets. Once you bring in a hundred and ninety-two, we would be reintroducing the full complement of staff to um, support that.
Thank you. Councillor Graham?
And sorry, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I may have missed this, councillor Bachman. So do we have a, a price, or did the BIA submit a price on how much it was costing them to do the hundred and ninety bas- was it a hundred and ninety, Jeff?
I haven't spoken directly with the BIA. I've just been told this secondhand. So my understanding is they had a count of a hundred and ninety-two baskets. Last year before HST, the municipality paid sixty-five dollars a piece for them.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, it makes sense if Port Stanley wants to do baskets, then, then they would have a group that would pay, or a couple of groups that would pay towards the whole thing, not just the price of the flowers. That would be fair for all of our community in Central Elgin. I agree with that. Um, and the only other piece I wanted to add was, I think there was a couple of groups that were interested in supporting the flowers in Port Stanley, and I don't know where that ended up. I, I only heard, heard that being talked about. And obviously, we talked about that at the BIA. Uh, but I, I didn't, I don't see where that got organized, where there was a couple of groups that wanted to pay towards flowers. So if the flowers are twenty-two thousand to water them, that, the, the math makes sense on that. It's a lot of work. Like, when, when councillor Bachman says that uh, they spend half a day just doing the ones in, in Belmont, then that makes sense, and it'd be that kind of money. And then whatever it is to buy the flowers, sixty-five dollars a basket. If, if port's going to have flowers, I think the community will have to pay for it.
Thank you. Councillor Graham?
I agree. I think, you know, I don't think that we can be splitting. Like councillor Bachman said, I don't think that that's fair across the municipality, and I, I don't support that.
I think we have the direction. If someone put forward a motion, councillor Bachman?
Um, put forth the motion that um, we do not support the twenty-two thousand five hundred. And I guess we can leave it up to the discretion of Port Stanley Business Improvement Association if they care to fund the, the operation of, of the flowers.
Councillor Halpin, seconding?
Through you, Mayor. Um, what's our timeframe to get this turned around if the BIA decides to pay for the whole amount? Because I know the flowers, there's a short timeframe to order them. So we might need to know about that.
I can't answer that for sure. Uh, typically, the staff, in order to get the two hundred and fifty baskets, we're making that order in December. Now, whether or not they're still available, uh, I can't say for certain if that same place will still make those available. However, as time goes on, it's becoming more and more difficult to find students to come in and do the work. So, you know, staff needs to have an answer, you know, within the next month if it wishes to proceed, so that we can staff the Parks Department well enough to carry out the operations.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Sleech?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Bogman, seconded by councillor Halpin. The council declined support for the Port Stanley BIA's proposed purchase of flower baskets for Port Stanley in 2024.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Our next item, DFS oh four two four, request for proposals for supply and delivery of one single axle fire pumper. That is with our Director of Financial Services, Mr. Arston. Did you wish to speak to this, sir?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Um, noted in the report that the uh, price that we received is about two hundred and fifty thousand less than what the estimate was back in the, earlier in the year when a report was provided to you. Um, and also with the um, sort of long, long timeframe to get this vehicle is important that, you know, we, you know, do this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Arston. Good news on the, on the um, reduction in costs. Any questions or comments from council? Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to confirm, there wasn't an option for a um, demonstrator that we could maybe get quicker or not at a better price? I know it was talked about.
Mr. Arston, chief, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Noble. There were three, I believe, no one came out and directly said it was a demonstrator. However, with the delivery dates, I suspect that there were most likely three vehicles of the five submissions that were demonstrators. And the reason I suspect that was because one could be delivered in June, one July, and I believe the other was September. Meaning they were demonstrators most likely because your fire chief conferences are usually April, May, June. So they would be available after that. Pricewise, I cannot tell you what the prices were, as with the two envelope system. You rate the vehicles, and then the top vehicles move forward to have those prices opened.
Thanks, chief. Any other questions? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a second here. Halpin, councillor Halpin, and councillor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bogman. That the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin accept the proposal from Dartch Fire Incorporated for 2023 oh one, supply and delivery of one single axle fire pumper in the amount of nine hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents, plus all applicable taxes.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. FS zero two two four, the monthly alarm activities. Questions or comments? If I could get a mover and a second or please. Deputy Mayor Noble and councillor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Connors. That report FS two twenty-four regarding monthly alarm activities report, January twenty twenty-four, be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. AMDS zero three two four, the January twenty twenty-four monthly building report. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's exciting to see that it's up from last year's January. It's good news.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a second or please. Deputy Mayor Noble? Councillor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Bogman. That report AMDS three twenty-four regarding December twenty twenty-three monthly building report be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Zero four two four are the January monthly bylaw reports. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I may ask for a mover and a second or councillor Watson? And Deputy Mayor Noble?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That report AMDS four twenty-four regarding January twenty twenty-four monthly bylaw reports be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? And now the actual bylaws, if I could get a mover and a second or councillor Connors? Councillor Halpin?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Connor, seconded by councillor Halpin. The bylaws two eight five eight, two eight five nine, and two eight six one be taken collectively.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Mover and a second or for first and second. Deputy Mayor Noble, councillor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Bogman. The bylaw two eight, bylaws two eight five eight, two eight five nine, and two eight six one be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. And then for final, I need a mover and a second or councillor Watson? Councillor Halpin?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Halpin. The bylaws two eight five eight, two eight five nine, and two eight six one be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Uh, other business. If I could, sorry. I didn't see that one. Sorry. Um, lastly, the bylaw two eight six two, uh, I need a mover and a second or for bylaw two eight six two. I didn't see it. Deputy Mayor Noble and councillor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Watson. That bylaw two eight six two be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Now to other business, strategic plan update. Mrs. Greenall, please. In fact, I think both of these are on for you, so I'll, I'll start with strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, um, as I informed you, um, I guess later last week, the strategic planning process uh, is now at the stage where um, a very rough draft or skeleton has been created. We have met with Jennifer Kirkham. She has taken all the information to date, compiled it. She has met with senior staff to review uh, that skeleton, to have their input. And now to proceed, uh, we need to meet with the Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, from council, I just sort of need to have some direction. As you noted, uh, as I'd sent out correspondence to you earlier, that that planning committee was actually motioned by council to be councillor Connors and deputy mayor Noble. And then as we have gone through conversations, I have heard other councillors had interested in participating. So I, I do need to know whether council wishes to remain with the committee as it was first structured. Um, if we wish to have an extra member join us. Um, likewise, uh, I can make arrangements for Jennifer Kirkham to come back if those of council who wish to be part of that conversation. But then that would need to be sort of in an open session for public consultation. So I'm just seeking direction on how you'd like to proceed with uh, council's first review of the plan.
Thank you, um, Ms. Greenall. Um, I think that our, we've got a couple of our members on the team. Looks good to me, but are there any other questions from council? Councillor Halpin?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. Um, so our concern here was that there are people who would like to be engaged with it, but obviously, we don't want to exceed quorum. Um, if members of the council would like to attend, just so they can see the conversation and understand how it's going, what would be functionally different or in conflict if you simply allowed them to be there in the same way that a councillor stays in the room during a pecuniary interest matter where you don't speak to it, you don't weigh in in any way, you don't ask questions or influence it, but you just sort of audit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to councillor Halpin. I would say it's going to be in a perception issue because while we are in open session of council, uh, there are minutes being taken. I mean, in this case, we are being videotaped, but normally you would be an open session accountant. This is a committee, and so any items on a committee uh, need to come to council before they're actually decided upon. The committee is just uh, looking at it, having first blush, and then making recommendations to come forward to council. Um, it is what conversations I've heard from this council is, it is your wish to make sure that that stays at uh, less than, than a majority of council. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're happy with our deputy mayor and word for councillor being on the strategic plan? Sounds like it. Councillor Graham, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to be on that committee. So I'm not sure. I'm sorry. Remove that or not?
Well, we can have three without quorum. You're asking to join, Mr. Councillor Connors and Deputy Mayor, councillor Graham, just so I'm correct? Thank you.
Uh, through your worship, uh, I know originally both councillor Graham and I had spoken about our interest in it. Uh, I am right now also on the uh, hiring committee for the finance director and the budget committee. So certainly, if she feels that she has the time for this as well, I would endorse that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Connors?
Through you, Mayor, uh, to, to Robin. What are you thinking about meetings time? When are we gonna be meeting, roughly?
Thank you, Mayor, to councillor Connors. As soon as I know who is on the committee, I'll be reaching out to you. We'll be setting those dates.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, COO clerk recruitment, Ms. Greenall, did you, oh. Any resolution for the strategic plan update?
If council, this is just an update, but if council wishes to have an extra member, then we will need a motion for that member to join us.
Councillor Halpin?
Can I move that we receive the update for information and appoint councillor Graham to join?
Okay. Do you have a second or councillor Halpin? Councillor Graham?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Graham. The verbal update from the CAO clerk regarding strategic plan update be received for information. And that councillor Graham be appointed to the strategic plan committee.
All those in favor? Opposed? I'm gonna need to call the vote again, sorry. Um, I didn't see all the hands, so I'm gonna ask one more time. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
No.
Councillor Connors?
No.
Councillor Bachman?
No.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
No.
Yes.
That's defeated.
Thank you. Did you wish to move to the strategic pla- or the, from the strategic plan to the COO clerk recruitment, Ms. Greenall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my understanding is council would like to move forward with a consultant to assist with the CAO recruitment. We're just looking for a motion to give direction for mayor and staff to proceed with um, seeking a recruitment for a consultant to assist you.
Questions or comments? Councillor Halpin?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Before we talk about the consultant, I would like to clarify some information. Um, obviously, all members of the council Obviously, all members of the council have the same right to have their voices heard and to have information. And I was surprised after we learned about Ms. Greenall's resignation to learn that you had intended to contact every member of council that weekend. And I was not contacted, and it took me only a few communications to discover that some members of council were and some were not. So could you please explain your process for us so that we can know who went into that meeting informed and who did not when we made the decision to talk about consultants and what our hiring process might be?
Well, thank you, Counselor Halpin. You had three calls about it, so I think you already knew. Anyways, we're talking now about the CIO clerk recruitment. If you want to talk about something after, I'm happy to do it. Please.
Thank you supplementary. Yes, I had heard from members of the community that it was a possibility. But what I mean is that I heard after the fact that you had intended to speak with individual members of council so that you could get an understanding of all of our takes and what we were hoping to see happen and that we could be sort of prepared for what the meeting was going to look like. So I was surprised when I found that you had not reached out to me, but that that had happened for other members of council. And that's why I'm asking if we could talk about the process and the communications to make sure that we are all
So we can talk about it, but not right now, because right now, we're talking about hiring a recruiter. And if anyone else has any questions or comments, Ms. Greenall, did you want to speak about the recruiter? Floor is yours.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, again, it is my understanding that council would like to engage a consultant to assist with the CIO recruiter. In order for us to proceed and assist council with that, we'd be looking for a motion for mayor and staff to engage in the consultant process.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, Counselor Graham?
I'd make that motion.
Can I get a seconder, please? Counselor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Connors. That officers and employees be directed to engage the services of Waterhouse Executive Search for the purpose of CIO clerk recruitment.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Could we please record that vote?
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. If we could record the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
No.
Counsel?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
No.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Thank you. If I could get a mover in a seconder to proceed into close, please. Counselor Connors and Counselor Bachman. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Bachman. The council proceed into closed session at seven fifty three PM in order to address the matter pertaining to the security of the property of the municipality or local board.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moving in a second. Thank you, folks. Take care. Good night, Jeff. Bye, Chief. Bye, David.